This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I will make a motion to open our planning board meeting dated October 19th at 6:35 PM.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. So, what the record show, all five members of the planning board are in attendance and all five voted in favor of opening the meeting. Um, so, uh, we'll just wrap up this first business right away here. Um, but beforehand, I guess I gotta go through two things. First of all, uh, we're having this meeting virtually by a video conference pursuant to orders from Governor Cuomo regarding a coronavirus pandemic. A village hall is closed. A meeting notice is posted on the village website that includes a link to this meeting. So any member of the public can participate in this meeting and observe our discussions. Uh, so with that said, the other thing I need to ask is if anyone has any conflicts of interest to disclose.
No.
No.
Nope, for myself as well. Okay, so what the record show, there's no conflicts of interest. Um, okay, so let's wrap up the one item since we're on it, which is the active transportation plan discussion. We have a continuation of the public hearing for that. Uh, does anyone in attendance tonight, uh, wish to make a comment on the active transportation plan? Okay, I'm hearing nothing. So I will make a motion to leave the public hearing open and continue discussion on October 29th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all five members voted in favor. Alright, so that's off our agenda. Thank you, everybody. Um, so we'll look that over and Mindy may have some comments for us as to how to proceed with that. So thank you for offering to look into that, Mindy.
Happy to do that.
Um, okay, so the other, next thing on our agenda is we had Mr. Jewett with his temporary permit application. And before, I just wanna go over an overview of the rest of tonight's agenda before we get to you, Mr. Jewett. Um, then we have Mr. Michael's applications for merging parcels. And we had a couple agenda items for information only. One is a proposed new structure along the canal between Aladens and Lot 32. And there is another possible discussion over a, uh, the Habad on Lincoln Avenue interested in opening a daycare and wondering, uh, what the process is for that. So I see Steve, Steve raising his hand and I thought he might have an update for us on what's going on.
Yes, I've, um, I've actually talked with Jeff in regards to this and this is gonna be done through a special use permit. They already have a special use permit because they are a church and the children that will be there will be in classes and all members of the church. So Jeff felt that it was legal or right to have them go through the trustees to amend their special use permit. Instead of, because you, you had said the, your, the method through the planning or zoning board would be very, very hard. So this was a, um, the option for them to actually hopefully successfully get what they need.
Yeah, good. I'm glad, I'm glad that's been resolved, Steve. Uh, so, so thanks for going over that. So that'll be off our plate then. And so I presume they will not be calling in. Okay, so the, um, agenda item for 21 Lincoln is going to be, uh, I guess removed from tonight's meeting. Okay, um, so that said, let's get to our, our first two, um, which is, we'll start with Mr. Jewett. And then we'll get, go to Mr. Michaels and then we'll, uh, listen to the proposal along Shane Place for the, the new structure. Um, so Mr. Jewett, uh, you were in here last month. And I think we, we heard from you regarding your Christmas tree sale application for our temporary permit. Uh, we took a look at it and, um, we let you know that new code has been adopted since the last time you came in, which unfortunately creates more paperwork and a few application requirements we needed to button up. And you worked with the building inspector, you got us an updated diagram of what you're gonna be doing. Um, we got a list of, uh, a description, a few more details of your activity today. So as far as I'm concerned, it, it looks like you fulfilled all the application requirements. We got the paperwork in order. I, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to do that. I know that's a bit burdensome. Um, but wanted to, we're hoping that you could get it done in a way that would satisfy all the requirements without being overly burdensome. Um, so I'm glad to see that you're able to get us fairly concise but simple documents that met our needs. So I, I think that was.
It wasn't a problem. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Yeah, not, not a problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so that said, you're basically, you're running your Christmas tree stand. You're doing it much like last year. You have one sign, you showed us the location of the sign. You had some basic LED lighting that was going in, which are basically string lights that were, um, run between the trees. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, they're elevated. It's a, it's a hundred foot string that I've used over the years and, um, it's, it's low wattage LED bulbs. Um, to just illuminate the Christmas trees.
Okay, and then, um, you're, you're doing the sales. You're not doing any special events or anything that's gonna make lots of noise or anything like that. So no musicians, none of that?
I have no interest in doing that. No, just an old.
Okay.
Yep.
Just, uh, may, may I ask one question here? Um, since it's in our checklist, the, the temporary signage that's gonna be installed, is that, uh, during the same, uh, approximate duration as the rest of the event? That's, that's not gonna be put out front, uh, a lot prior to the, uh, a long time prior to the, the sale of Christmas trees or anything?
No, 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 it's the last thing to go up. So I, I open, um, it's kind of a soft opening the last few days before Thanksgiving. So that's when it goes up and then it, it's down Christmas Eve. So.
Okay.
Let it up and down as quick as possible.
Thank you. Just wanted to check since who is in our checklist here?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the, does anyone else have any other questions about this? So what we've often done in the past, and I don't know if we even need to do that in this case, since it's not changing much, is uh, in case, uh, they wanna make some changes to the layout or what he's doing. In the past, we've, uh, included in our resolution authorization for the building inspector to approve amended signage, amended lighting, and some other things like that. Is everyone still on board with us doing that?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, so Mr. Jewett, it sounds like if you need to make some tweaks to it, to whatever you're doing, um, just any, you can, you, we have to have conversations with the building inspector and it certainly would, we don't wanna see it again. I think it's pretty, pretty fair unless it's a drastic change. Um, so you'd be working with the building inspector for that. And if Steve gets any complaints, uh, you'll be working with the building inspector to address that. And this has gone on for twenty something years. You, you're familiar with everything. Everyone in the village is familiar with this. So it'll be a great event, we're sure.
Thank you.
Um, does any, does anyone have any other questions? Okay, um, let me go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing for the Christmas tree sales. I may as well open it for both of them, for the temporary use permit and for the site plan review.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, does anyone in the public have any comments regarding this application? Okay, um, I see no one from, no comments from the public. So I'll make a motion to close both public hearings for the temporary use permit and for the site plan.
Second.
Yeah, lots of seconds. I think you'd like to give one. Um, okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess the next question is how do we wanna do this? Um, we can, um, go over our findings, resolution later in the evening after we get through everything and all the discussions with people. I'm, I'm thinking that might be useful. Uh, but I, I see no reason to deny this application. I, seems to be a very wonderful event as it always is and, um, I would just prefer to defer the discussion over the paperwork for later in the evening if that's okay.
I'm okay with that too.
Good idea.
Agreed.
All right, so Mr. Jewett, I think we're all set with you. If you wanna stick around, you're welcome to. Um, I, um, think our resolution's gonna look almost exactly like everything we've done in the past. And, um, Linda will send you a copy of it whenever it's done. So you can stick around or not, that's your call. Um, but we'll, um, um, she'll be contacting you, um, in the next few days, I would imagine, to give you a copy of our decision.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna go watch the Bills game, so, uh.
Sounds good.
Have a nice day.
Thank you again.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, um, Mr. Michaels, you are the next application on our agenda. Um, so again, I wanted to thank you, um, as I mentioned earlier, because your application is another simple one that required a lot of paperwork. And, um, it happened, some things fall between the cracks in our village code from time to time and get, uh, they may be fairly innocuous applications, but they can still trigger substantial reviews sometimes. So again, thank you for working with us to get this through. Um, and I heard a little bit of the building.
Justin, we're getting, I don't know if anybody else is getting a lot of feedback, but I'm getting a lot of feedback and bubbly sounds.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe if I, if I may suggest that people are not speaking all mute and, uh, we'll be able to hear a little better, I think.
Okay, mine's quieted down. Um, so I only had one question for Mr. Michaels. Uh, the building inspector already addressed us with this. But, um, you have two separate applications. You're essentially merging, each application is to merge two parcels. One is a substantial parcel with a building on it, parking lots and so on, with a small wooden parcel, um, next to the canal. So you're basically making your lot slightly larger with land that is currently vacant, uh, in both applications. Um, so the information we had from the building inspector was that there's no immediate plans to construct anything on these parcels. So that's really the only question we have for you. Because if you're just merging parcels, that's really not a, a big concern of anybody. So that's, uh, uh, so if you have no development plans, uh, that'll let us get the rest of our paperwork done in fairly short order. So that's the only question I really have for you.
Uh, I have no development plans whatsoever. No.
Okay, so both, go ahead, Mindy.
I was gonna say, a related question is, um, whether you plan to change the use at all of either of these properties?
No.
Modify or change the?
No, no, this is just simply a little excess land that I purchased. And, you know, I could leave it as a separate parcel for each one. But I think it makes more sense. It's, it's good housekeeping to just merge it and it becomes one parcel. That's the only reason. I mean, if, if I didn't do it, it's not gonna affect me. If I do it, I just think it's a little tidier for the people, my son who inherits this property, quite frankly. And the only other question I might have, Justin and Mindy, is it possible instead of waiting a month for putting this back on, can we do it in that two week timeframe when you have the next meeting? Or was that one of the?
We might vote on this tonight.
Okay.
So Mindy, is there anything preventing us from voting on this tonight?
No, we already talked about the possibility, um, that Steve had recommended of making it a conditional approval. Cause we don't have the 239 and back from the county.
And I would, I would believe we will hear within the next two weeks. It's been in for two and a half weeks right now, I believe, um, to the county and they usually are very good about getting back to me, uh, with an application within thirty days.
Well, that's all they get is thirty days. So if they take longer than that, I don't care.
Um, I just have one question and this is not specific per se to the, uh, joining of lots, but rather how you use the lot before you own the lot. Did the Canal Corp really care per se as to how you use that land mass before? And did it just kinda come upon you by, like, coincidence as in the Canal Corp said, hey, we got these things, you want them? Or did you kinda call them up and say, hey, I've kinda never owned this couple of feet. I'd sort of like to, can you sell it to me? How does that take place?
Good question, David. Um, I did contact the Canal Corp. And the motivating factor was, um, both structures, a, a small section of them, the porch steps on the canal side, was over the line on to these little strips of land. And, uh, they said, sure, well, we can sell those to you. We locked them, we got together, we, they had appraisals done, and we agreed on a price and it was done. So, I'm sorry.
I, I was simply gonna say, cause it seems like the utility of that is one that the community, other, other village residents who have land that is remarkably close to the canal, but may have an extra two or three feet that the Canal Corp owns. It seems as though the utility of what you're doing is a, a good investment, not just for you here in this case, but for residents in general to have awareness of. And I, I wouldn't see why the village would wanna cede these little strips of land to the Canal Corp if they could otherwise own them outright.
Yes, I agree. Um, the Canal Corp's general, uh, way of handling these, if you don't purchase it, is to lease them to you on a year-by-year basis. And that really is not very inexpensive. It's getting fairly expensive to do such a thing. Um, I've maintained it. I've done all, everything for these parcels over the years. Uh, I've owned these parcels probably, I don't know, thirty-five years, um, these buildings. Uh, so, you know, it was, it was a natural progression.
Yeah.
Since I'm maintaining it, since my buildings are slightly over the line, to clarify all that, clean it all up.
Yep.
And just make it part of the
Yeah.
package. So that's really my motivation is not to develop it. I, at least I have no plans right now whatsoever to develop it. Uh, the process of going through and obtaining this from the Canal Corp is, um, a young man's pursuit because he'll be probably old by the time he gets it. This is a long process.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, so this ordeal that you've gone through with the village, it sounds like it's nothing compared to the Canal Corp.
Totally agreed.
Okay. We, because I think we felt a little bad for having you, you, uh, having to check all the boxes and go through everything. So. Uh, but you've already been, this is the end of it and you've already been through quite an adventure, it sounds like. So, anyway. Um, well, go ahead and open the public hearing on this. So I guess we'll open them one at a time. Um, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, first of all, for 3436 State Street. Do we have a second?
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
I think a few people are muted here.
Aye.
Joanne? And Dave?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So we got unanimous, uh, approval to open the public hearing. That said, uh, does anyone from the public have a comment on merging of the two parcels at, um, 3436 State Street? Okay, I see no comments. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 3436 State Street.
Second.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Okay, so it looks like unanimous, uh, closure then. Um, let's repeat this for the other one. Um, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for 40 State Street. Again, this is to merge two parcels of land.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, and does anyone from the public wish to submit any comments regarding the merging of these two parcels at 40 State Street? Okay, we received no comments. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 40 State Street.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, again, unanimous, uh, vote to close it. Now, uh, I'm gonna suggest that we do the same thing we did with Mr. Jewett here. Um, we have some paperwork we gotta button up with this. I haven't heard any objections. So, um, Mr. Michaels, you can stick around if you really like to, but we're gonna be, um, going over some of the environmental documentation and some other stuff. I'd like to do that after we get through all of the applicants that wanna present to us tonight. So if you wanna stick to that, um, welcome to. If not, uh, our secretary Linda will give you an update as to where things stand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. Have a good night or, or stick around if you'd like to.
Okay, um, the next one was for this new development on Shane Place. This was for information only. Uh, we had a diagram of, I guess, are you calling this a gazebo or a? I, I guess go ahead and give us a little presentation on what your, your thought is and how you're describing it.
Okay, certainly. Um, thank you very much, first of all, for, um, allowing us to do this informational, um, conversation. Um, back in, uh, May, we, um, proposed and the village trustees approved a shared, um, seating area between Aladens and Lot 32 to be shared, um, by those two as well as, um, Simply Crepes and Coal Tower. And so since May, there has been, um, this shared seating area. Um, the impetus was of course COVID and finding a way where people could, um, enjoy the restaurants, enjoy the canal. Um, but the feedback has been excellent, um, both from patrons. And then when we, um, spoke with the village trustees again in September to, um, ask what their feedback had been like and could it be extended beyond October because the, um, original approval, none of us knew back in May, I guess we hoped that, um, maybe there would be some relief to the COVID issues sooner. And as we all know, unfortunately, there hasn't been. Um, so we went back. They had, um, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of praise for having, um, the area available for people to gather in a, um, responsible socially distanced way. And did approve that shared, um, patio seating through at least April of 2021 to be reviewed again. Um, and at that time, a discussion came up, however, that, um, would, would the trustees even consider making, um, how would they regard, I guess is, is the better way, the idea of putting in a, a pavilion, perhaps with plastic sides that could roll down in order to be able to extend, um, the use seasonally by, by the tenants and the public of that shared, um, area. The trustees regarded that pretty positively and said, certainly look, look into it. Um, outlined the steps that we would need to take with both, um, this zoning and planning board as well as the, um, architectural review board. And with our, our tenants, um, decided to further investigate what that might look like. Mayor Corby and the building inspector met with us on site, um, provided some input as to what any design would, would need to include. Things like the, um, right-of-way for emergency vehicles and so forth. Um, and so we, um, engaged an architect who, um, developed the plan that, um, we shared with you for full review, um, next month. One of our biggest considerations was to keep the design consistent with the existing pavilion that is there that was put in, um, 1995 as a collaborative arrangement between the Canal Corp, the village, and my father Ted Collins. And to, to keep a, a consistent, um, look so that it, um, would, would keep the environment the way that everyone hopes it would be. So I think you can see from the design that that's what he has done. Um, included, uh, as well, a, um, extending the patio area around it, finishing it off. Right, right now, it's, um, essentially the pavement that had previously, previously been, um, parking. And so it's uneven and, um, not as desirable, either safety-wise or aesthetically pleasing. So we would put in a concrete patio area and then, um, the idea of a fire structure, a fire, a gas fire pit, landscaping and so forth. So we have submitted the application for review in November, but I believe that Steve spoke with one of you and suggested that it would be helpful and useful to perhaps, um, have this discussion tonight if there is any input, anything that this board believes we should be considering before moving forward, then this would be a wonderful time to hear about it.
Okay, well, so you're in for information only and, um, without a complete application, we can't really get into the merits of the application itself, but we can certainly talk about what the process is, some of the issues we, that we are likely to look at and things like that. Um, so we're here to answer any questions you might have about what we need to go through. Um, but it's, uh, one of my things I was wondering about was whether there is any, um, right-of-ways and so on in there. So it sounds like Steve, you've already looked into that with the mayor and that's been satisfied, uh, or at least that's being resolved, whatever issues you're finding. Uh, Steve, you're muted.
Sometimes that's a good thing. Now, um, yeah, we, I, I made sure that we let, left the access, the emergency access way down to the canal. That, like when that car went in, um, a couple months ago, that was the path they used to, to bring the ambulance down there. So we made sure that that access way is still available. Uh, there's a walk path on both the other side for peo, for pedestrians. Um, we tried to cover every bases and the point of having her come in is, you know, trying to get all the, the ducks that we need, you know what I mean? And, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to extend this to multiple meetings if we don't have to. If we can find out the things that you guys need or want and we can accomplish that, you know, I mean, it is easily for you guys and for Mrs. Collins.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, have you looked into code compliance issues yet with this?
I don't believe there are any code compliance issues with what they're planning.
Um, okay, so I didn't know how this impacts parking, um, and landscaping requirements for the site. Um, I guess that'll be something that we need to look into offline. Though, um, so I guess there's, there's three or four things. There's lighting requirements, parking requirements, landscaping requirements possibly. Though, um, so I guess there's there's three or four things. There's lighting requirements, parking requirements, landscaping requirements possibly. Um, I think all those will need to be reviewed to see what what is applicable and what's not. Um, can anyone think of any other topics? Mindy?
Yeah, I just had a question, Ms. Collins. Are the pavilion and the gas fire pit, all these improvements would be on a property that you own?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, they've actually backed it off a little bit to make sure that it's all within the Collins's uh, property. And as far as the parking goes, it, changing the arrangement down there um, and turning the parking spaces the other way has worked out quite well over the course um, this summer. There's been no no detrimental impact. Um, and it, you know, we all know with what's going on right now, kind of thinking outside the box to uh, help these restaurants survive, um, has worked very well so far for the village. Um, and and I have to say, there are other places have not survived so well because they did not allow some people to to do some of the 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 extra things, you know, I mean, and Justin, you sent some pictures, I believe, from somewhere you're visiting where they did some of the outdoor um, seating arrangements that's helped these businesses survive. And and I I feel it's our duty to do that, you know, I mean, as as municipality and the and to keep the residents and the businesses uh, floating as much as we can.
I know from feedback from at least um, Aladdin's, Simply Crepes, and Lot Thirty Two, the the difference has been astounding for them that that it has really made it um, much more likely for them to sustain during this whole pandemic. When, um, if I may ask, when you mentioned lighting, parking, and landscape issues, are those things that we need to um, reference from somewhere else to be sure that we've followed them, or is that something that you're saying you would investigate and notify us? I'm I'm very, very new to this process, so I'm not exactly sure how that proceeds.
Yeah, uh, Steve, the building inspector is ultimately responsible for determining if it complies with code. I have not looked at any of this yet. We've had all new code that was adopted. Um, so I don't know what is going to be applicable. It's just something I would would appreciate if Steve looked into. We may, Steve and I may have some discussions behind the scenes. Uh, that's usually how this goes and um, Steve normally ultimately makes a determination as to whether it complies with the code or not. If it does not comply with the code, um, so let's say, for example, uh, what you're doing creates a per our code requires more parking. If you don't have those parking spots, then we would look into, you know, is there some kind of shared parking arrangement that is permissible under our code? Or you could come to the zoning board and request a variance to um, get a waiver from that code requirement for additional parking. So there is a few complexities that could come down the road. We have to look into it in more detail. Um, and Steve is gonna be the heavy lifter on that. And we, um, sometimes our attorney will chime in. We'll have a few, often we'll have a few discussions behind the scene to try to sort this all out. So this is just kind of the beginning of it, to listen to what you're gonna do. It sounds like Steve's already looked into this with the mayor. Uh, this is the first we've heard of it. Uh, but uh, just know there's some things that could possibly arise. Um, I don't know if there are gonna be problems or not problems. We just, I just don't know right now. Steve might.
So am I correct in in thinking that um, from a high level, we're looking at a site plan review, LWRP consistency review, given a location? Um, possibly an area variance for the the parking and then HBB would also do a um, uh, certificate of appropriateness? Is that the the likely basis?
Well, I think this is likely a commercial property, uh, building under four thousand square feet, which that would make it type two. Would that be correct, Mindy? So that would mean we can avoid seeker and avoid LWRP review. So um, so then we, uh, I guess what would be is also involve the trustees for a, I think they need a special use permit. Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, they would have to modify their special use permit.
Um, and is this going to be for use by Lot Thirty Two?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, so um, Ms. Collins, uh, we have a little bit of a, it sounds like you're gonna get a tour of three or perhaps four boards, depending on what Steve finds with code compliance. Uh, which I know isn't the most fun, so you'll have to work through us, uh, work with us on all of this. Um, we have a bit of overlap with the trustees in that they get to approve the use of the land it with their uh, special use permit. And we take a look at um, the site plan layout and the main thing we're looking at is we're looking at whether things comply with code and we're looking at how this will impact other properties. So things like drainage, is water going to be from the roof gonna get dumped onto another property? Um, is landscaping adequate and uh, comply with code and does it um, make it a generally attractive property? But those are some of the types of things that we look at. We'll look at noise, lighting. So for example, if you're gonna put up light fixtures, you wanna have adequate illumination to be safe for pedestrians, but you don't want so much light that you're broadcasting onto another property. So you you wanna keep it on your own property. So in general, that's kind of what we're looking at, is making sure you're keeping the uh, impacts on your property, you're not adversely impacting other property. So that's and we're also not adversely impacting public safety. So those are some of the big things we're looking at. Um, unfortunately, some of those impacts on other properties are a little bit shared with the trustees in their use permit. Um, I think they, what they should be doing, I can't speak for them, is they're gonna probably look for things like um, looking at what your hours of operation are likely to be for this and they may put restrictions on that if they're concerned about it to keep uh, noise down. Um, and we're probably going to look for, if we have any concerns, we're we're not going to be looking at those soft issues like that, probably like regular, changing the number of seats or changing your hours. We're probably might say, put a shrub over here or something like that. So we're gonna look more towards the physical layout of the site. And if we have any concerns, we may ask you to make physical layout changes. Um, that said, the trustees may have some other comments as well, but that's how I think it's likely to go, is we'll look at the physical layout of it, not architecturally, but the impacts of it. Um, and the trustee should look at the use and um, your hours, number of seats and so on. And then the architectural board should take a look at the appearance of the building, the materials of the building and so on. Uh, so that's, I think, a general summary of how it can go. Steve and Mindy, you can you can chime in if you have any additions to the general description.
That's a good summary. Thanks, Justin.
Just a question regarding process and the LWRP that you were mentioning wouldn't apply. Um, so the building of any building under four hundred square feet in the LWRP coastal area, as long as it's under four hundred square feet, it doesn't matter. It's neither a type one nor two?
Under a commercial building under four thousand square feet is a type-two action.
Under four that, so, okay, so is this gonna be a type-two action?
Um, that was a discussion we had with Mindy. She seemed to agree that that would make sense. That's subject to us getting a a formal application. But um, unless there's something that's brought up that um, makes it unlisted, that would seem to make sense to me. A change in use is type-two and buildings under four thousand square feet are type-two. So that seems to me, at least, to be a logical classification of it.
Okay, and then a type-two, what type of um, that then we don't do an LWRP consistency review on that?
Correct.
So then the follow-on question is, is with regards to our determination of um, site plan, as a board, do we still consider the components of the LWRP? We just simply don't have to rule as to whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent. Meaning, should Jenny review and Ms. Collins review the LWRP at all, or can she disregard it, given that it's a type-two?
I'll let Mindy answer that one.
Yeah, I mean, if we're we're dealing with a brand-new code, so it's it's still a little sticky right now. But I think that you're right. We don't, um, Ms. Collins will not need to um, satisfy the requirements of the LWRP to get a consistency determination from the planning board. She will just need site plan approval, it appears.
And would we, in thinking about, for example, the pavilion and how the community, when it would, obviously, this is um, on her property, so and I'm rather new, Ms. Collins, to this. I've been on the board for less than a year, so I just wanna make sure I understand what we're doing in light of the new code as well and maybe it it helps you understand. Uh, also, um, so with regards to placing a new structure on the property, uh, under four thousand square feet, uh, we, in doing site plan review, can consider components of the LWRP, but it's not a necessity with regards to being consistent.
To the extent that the components of the LWRP may be part of site plan review, you would consider them?
Okay. But only as it is part of site plan review, coincidentally overlapping, not a separate item by themselves.
Right.
And uh, I would say that a big component of the LWRP starts getting into aesthetic things. And usually, under site plan reviews, um, particularly as far as the aesthetics of buildings go, we usually leave that to the architectural board to handle that. We kind of have a, some shared uh, overlap with it and a planning board, particularly when it's not visible from public rights away, but when you're considering like aesthetic concerns from like a neighbor's property. Um, you can look at that and the APRB often doesn't. So in this case, it's visible from everywhere, so I'm thinking the building appearance in general. I don't, I think we should just let the architectural board handle that. I'm not really good into that. That's my comments.
You're right. This board is gonna be more concerned with um, the placement of the structures on the lot and how the structures might impact the adjacent properties. Not so much what the structures look like.
Do you, do you own the um, property, uh, Lot Thirty Two is in presently?
Yes. So we own the property that Lot Thirty Two is in, that Aladdin's is in, that Simply Crepes is in and across this, which is across the street as well as Coal Tower, all of, so we're the the area is surrounded by my property.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Um, I did have one other question when you mentioned um, when you received the full application. So last week, I did submit the um, zoning application form with the fee and with this plan. Is is there something in addition to that that you're looking for when you say the full application?
Um, I I don't think anyone has deemed it complete yet, so I don't know if it's good or not good. Usually, the way the process works is Steve, the building inspector, looks at it and he'll look at zoning things. He'll determine if he has any, needs more information from you. Usually, a a few weeks before our meeting, I'll ask him what's going on and if I have any comments like, hey, can we get this piece of additional information? I'll let him know and then he'll work with you to get it. So, um, it's look, so I I wouldn't say that it's indeterminate right now if your application is ready to go or not. Uh, we're just starting to go through, take a look at it. So you'll hear from Steve if anything more is needed. Is that fair enough, Steve?
Yeah, that that's why I wanted to come in here to, you know, to to plug the board a little bit and see if there was any other requirements or something I was missing. I assume that she basically had to come to you for site plan review, special use permit to the the village trustees and then HBB for the structure itself. But, you know, I mean, I wanna make sure the steps are right so that, you know, I, that's why I had her come in early. Uh, she didn't make the deadline for this meeting, which works out fine because it it, I garnered a little more information too, as I believe Ms. Collins did. So now I can go through, we'll make sure and I and I'll, you know, keep touch with Justin, which we do anyways. And make sure that, you know, we have everything in order for the next meeting to to see if we can, you know, truly review this and and make some sort of determination.
I I just had one question about uh, materials and and some things that were mentioned. Uh, there's an indication of plastic roll-down uh, along the sides of the the structure, um, probably to increase the season, which makes a lot of sense. Um, given how people are enjoying space outside. Um, and this would be a question that I would defer to the the fire marshal on, but as far as using uh, propane heaters or anything like that, um, you know, I just wanted to make sure that those those issues are addressed, uh, so that we prevent carbon monoxide issues.
Yeah, there's there's different things. Now, you can have, you can have a heater, but it has to be on the outside. You cannot have any heater underneath the structure. It has to be at least five foot away. Um, the new phase-two Como's phase-two restrictions require some other ventilation issues with any any structure, the plastic walls. Um, so those will be obviously addressed by me. Um, you know, like I said, no heaters underneath, has to be an outside heat source. They've just actually done that for the tequila-ria. Uh, you know, got an external and ran a duct into their area. I had to make them open up some some of the sides because of the phase-two um, requirements. And obviously, as we go along, i- if things stay static the way they are, there'll be some stipulations on what they can and can't do as far as plastic. Um, and and, you know, I keep abreast of the the new rules and hopefully some things open up here, you know, as we go along, but if not, that, you know, we'll adhere to the phase-two and and hopefully it still gives them a a well-extended season. You know, which I would assume that it, you know, I don't know how soon in the fall it could be done, but obviously, it would allow them to open much earlier in the spring a- as far as having some outdoor things. You know, a nice day, you might be able to even open them up. You know what I mean? And and give people some air and a nice view of the canal to sit and enjoy a a a hot drink or a beer or some food.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions, either from the applicant on the process moving forward or any other board members?
No, I appreciate all of the information that we were able to get tonight so that um, we can help this move forward.
Okay, well, we know you've got to visit a few boards, so we'll try to be uh, we'll try to be friendly and uh, help you work your way through this. And Steve is the man. He's the uh, point person to get it all done. Uh, to coordinate everything, so I'm sure he'll be there to help.
Well, it's really helpful to have one person like that, that that, you know, can give the answers and and help navigate because, as I said, yes, I'm brand-new to it, I'm willing to learn, but it's helpful to have a navigator.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, well, thank you for coming in. I'm glad we could answer a few questions for you and thank you very much for presenting your thoughts. I found that very helpful to get the big picture of what's going on. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good evening.
All right, um, so now we can get through the fun parts of looking at uh, draft resolutions and revising them as needed. Um, so if my suggestion is, Mr. Lightgib, you had, uh, can you present the ones that you worked on for um, the access tree sale?
Sure thing. Um, yeah, would you like to start with the?
All right.
Okay.
I think we, um, you can go watch some football, Steve.
And I'm not watching the football, but I got plenty to do.
Wait, before Steve.
Thank you for joining us.
Wait, before Steve leaves, um, if you're inclined to waive any of the requirements of any of the applications, maybe we could get his opinion as to whether they're necessary for you to consider.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Leek, you were talking here. You're going to go over the?
Sure, yeah, let me just pull up, um, I can share my screen. Temporary permit, okay, I think this is the one. Can you see that okay? I can't see as many faces here. One second. Okay, now I'm all better. All right, so we've got the two parts here, the temporary zoning permit, and then we've also got a, a site plan. And so I filled out this information. Mr. Fleetstra has helped out with a couple of pieces here.
What happened to the seeker comments? Oh, it just took a two in front of it.
Yep, I guess the spacing here, okay. There we go. Whoops. It's gonna be hard to see with track changes on, so I might just change that. I'm not as good with Microsoft Word as I am with Google Docs. I gotta struggle to do this here.
Yeah, I think you can just turn off the track changes.
Yeah.
The review.
Review, okay, thank you. And tracking, and I'm gonna turn those off for a second.
Yeah, you should be able to accept all and turn off tracking.
Okay. Review.
Move over two inches under accept.
Accept all changes.
And stop tracking is usually an option.
View. Accept all changes and stop tracking, okay.
There you go.
All right, that'll make it easier to see, thank you. Easier to see the Okay, so we've got the, the seeker, and it's a minor temporary, minor temporary use of land, having negligible or no permanent impact to the environment, and is therefore a type two action that is not subject to secret review pursuant to six NYCRR 617 dot five C 21. And that was the part that I was getting hung up on. I thought that there was something that was triggering this to be a, a part, a type one, but it's not, so it doesn't seem like we have any issues there. I don't know how you want me to go through this, Justin. Do you want me to, to read through this, or?
I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to read it. Maybe skim over the talking points, let everyone look at it. First of all, do people want a little time to read this on the screen? Can you see it?
I can read it, and yeah, I'm good if I just read it, and then we go from there.
Okay, so I can just kind of run down the, the whereas parts too. So we've got the, the seeker, type two action, Monroe County Planning, and it doesn't need review. I guess there's an agreement to 1994 between the Village Board and, and County Planning. Never, never saw that, but I imagine it happened.
I can forward it to you.
Okay, thanks.
It, it, it does not read well. Prehending that agreement is a bane of Steve's existence.
Interesting, yeah. I'm curious to, to see it now. So waterfront consistency, so my follow-up question on the, the seeker classification was whether or not we needed to do this, but it turns out we don't, since it's type two, so we're good to go there. And let's see. It's in the village gateway business. Is that the right expansion of that acronym? VGB districts? Okay. So let's see, and, and this is why we need to, to go through the temporary use permit, since this is not generally allowed, since it's outside sales. And once we approve this, then it's in compliance with the regulations requirements. Let's see, duration is limited, doesn't fit in with the, the overall expectations for the district, the duration is limited, so that should be okay. It's on a private lawn, well away from the street. It's in the center of the circle. Wonder if you're with pedestrian safety. Annual tradition in the village for 25 years, I think it is. And don't have any, any complaints, won't tend to depreciate values of adjacent property. No, no issues with health or, or safety. And let's see, will not be detrimental to the flow of traffic. They've already got a commercial use. They've already got traffic around there. And don't see any issues of that, so and it won't alter the, the character of the neighborhood, so I think this is pretty much the same as, as last year, so see any, any questions? Okay. Joanne, I can't hear you, Joanne. Oh, I'm hearing a slightly robotic.
I don't hear Joanne either, and the robotic sound is probably my washing machine.
You all missed the piano lesson that was going on downstairs here before, so.
Joanne, we still can't hear you, though. Yeah, I don't, sorry, I don't know what she's saying.
Joanne, you could also dial in with phone if you wanted to. There's a, if you can even click on the, the long number in the email on your iPhone, it should bring you right in with the right access code.
You want to try, you want to try changing the volume on your computer, Joanne?
Yeah, there might be a microphone volume and settings or something, but potentially.
We heard earlier, so unless she did something. Maybe just exit out and come back in.
And Justin, you're, it looks like you're talking, but you're muted as well.
Oh, it looks like I was muted. Okay, it looks like she's left.
Well, that all looks good, by the way, Justin.
Okay, well, I didn't do a whole lot here, mostly copying and pasting, and, and Mr. Fleetstra helped to straighten things out too, so.
Yeah, I asked him to, I sent him the, the prior approvals we made and asked him to update this for the current application and the current code. And he did a nice job of updating it.
Not easy.
There, there are a lot of details, then I, I get stuck, and I'm like, oh no, this is a, a type one, and, and I need to get unblocked from from everyone here, so. Let's see, we've got Joanne coming back in, and Joanne is muted, and
She's unmuted.
Let's hope. Something's weird going on.
I might be hearing the same minor robotic sound. I can see her now.
Me?
Yes, I just heard something.
Okay.
Yes.
So now I forgot what my question was. No, my question was, do we need to include any information about the ag data form in the resolution?
Is it within 500 feet of a farm operation in agricultural district?
It is.
Yeah.
Didn't he, didn't he submit an ag data form?
He did, he did. I just, my question is, do we need to mention that in the, in the res?
Yes.
And which one, site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, good question, which one?
I put in the, the site plan review one.
Site plan, okay, next one. Okay, anything else that anyone has on, on this? I none of this has changed from prior years, trash removal, dates on site being restored.
So the dates match the dates he sent us today?
Were their dates changed today? Let me where would that have been?
He said three days before Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, I thought he said.
So we're going to December 30th, so we're good with the end date. And November 23rd. I actually thought there was a different date. Let me just check.
November 14th.
Yep, so I think we need to change this to the that might have been expanded slightly, thank you.
Yep.
And I think, I'm sorry, can, did you, I, I'm switching over to a separate screen here, but I guess you're still on the first one. Just making sure this is November 14th.
And it says to December 31st.
Yep. Okay, December 31st, an extra day there too.
And it says 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so I would suggest putting that in here.
Okay. Hours of operation? You mean?
Yep.
Okay, days and times. So we'll see.
Every day.
Okay.
Yep, that's an update, December 30th to December 31st.
Thank you. We've got December 31st here. I guess I changed it there before. Okay. Any, any other questions or issues that we should address? What else was there? So we've got the hours of operation.
Yeah, he mentioned times of deliveries, which are kind of early in the morning, but I'm not particularly concerned about that. Getting deliveries twice, and I don't think they're near anybody other, and I'm sure he'll work it out with the Corbies.
Okay, anything that we should specify here? Say that some deliveries may occur before opening hours, or just leave it?
It says outdoor merchandise sale. It doesn't say anything about deliveries. I'm not terribly concerned about deliveries. I think they work it out with the Corbies, as I suggested.
Sounds good. Okay, any other questions, or shall we vote on this, or go over the site plan and then vote on both?
Mindy, do you have an opinion on the, whether we vote on the site plan first, or the temporary use permit first? I guess it really doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Let's vote.
Okay, I heard someone offered to make a motion.
Okay. Susan, do you want to make a motion on that?
Oh, yes, sure. So I, I move that the resolution as stated be accepted by the board tonight.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll change that right now too, so.
So, yeah, you seconded it.
Uh huh. Perfect. Okay.
Yep.
And we'll let Linda figure out what number this is.
Right. Okay. Great, I will send these to Linda after the meeting as well. Give me a moment, and I'll change my screen to have the site plan up. See.
I'm missing person.
Me too.
Me three.
All right, I'm gonna do the same thing with turning off track changes. I'll accept all and stop tracking. Okay, can everybody see the screen with the site plan? Okay. And I'll run through these as I did on the, on the other resolution. And this is new this year, so there, there might be a more review necessary, or, or more changes on this, since we're not just copying and pasting a lot of the document. We didn't do site plan before. It's required by the new code. But getting down to the, the whereas statements, it's, it's a minor temporary use type two action. And so we don't need to do the secret review. Monroe County Planning, let's see, did you say that they, they've received it and they haven't chimed in yet? Oh no, I'm sorry, we don't need it because of the agreement in 1994.
The agreement exempts minor site plan review from referrals.
Okay.
At least that's my recollection. I haven't looked at it recently, but we used to have a debate about it, because it didn't explain what minor site plan review was, but now that our code does, now we can use that exemption.
Great, let's, let's enjoy that exemption. And so we've got the waterfront consistency review that we don't need as well. And we don't require other approvals from state or county agencies. And let's see, so these, these are points that I, I just added in prior to the meeting as well. We've got oh, and Mr. Fleetstra added in the zoning violations that do exist on the property that this is on, and they've applied for a temporary use permit to remedy those violations. Actually, I'm sorry, Justin, I'm, I'm confused on this one, I think. So we want to say the action does not create any zoning violations?
Well, it
What do we?
Maybe Mindy can chime in. It's not allowed by zoning. So they're applying for the, they applied for the temporary use permit to get around that.
So we would say it is not allowed by zoning.
Mindy can chime in.
So are, are, are there not violations on record?
I was confounding two issues. I, I think, I was thinking that this is talking about the violations that, as far as I know, or from what I've heard, do exist on the property. And this is text that Justin Fleetstra added, and I guess it refers to just the fact that we're, we're not talking about those violations. We're just talking about the fact that this use is not allowed by the underlying zoning, and we're giving, we're granting this temporary use permit to allow that use.
I thought that the new code prohibits the board from considering applications where there's an outstanding violation at the property. Right.
That's our understanding, and what I heard from Steve is, he's not aware of any violations at the property. I've heard of violations going back years, but he could not find documentation of them, so so I'm, I'm not going to get involved in that. If they forward it to us, we're supposed to act on it. And I, my understanding is, if he finds a violation, his duty is to not forward it to us.
I agree.
Yeah. But as far as I understand now, though, we're not talking about that in, in this particular point. We're just saying that, you know, as, as I kind of revised this text, it's not generally allowed, but we're allowing it with temporary use permit. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, so, and, and we asked about drainage, and I just said, as it's temporary, drainage will not be impacted. The trees could absorb some of the moisture on the ground, maybe. But not, not a big deal, so. Utilities are adequate for the buildings and proposed use, because usage is temporary, and outdoor and expanded utilities will not be required. Light fixtures will not introduce light trespass. I filled in that it's a low intensity and relatively distant from adjacent properties. There have been no complaints in similar lighting in prior years. And Mr. Jewett did indicate tonight that it was the same string of lights that he's used previously, I believe. Landscape, we've got a circle in front of the, the dairy that's worked well. And parking facilities. And the, they won't be changed, since this is an existing commercial use on, on the site with the dairy, so I imagine parking patterns would be the same. Parking is adequate, and there's abundant parking on the site. I, I would imagine that it's also off-season for their, their primary ice cream business. They might have extra parking spots. Maybe I'm jumping to conclusions there, but I, I didn't think parking would be an issue.
I think we should, we would add, we have not, we have, the building inspector has not reported any parking, that this will cause any parking
Okay.
violations or code violations.
Right, and the other thing I think we should mention is 210 dash 24 dot 10 B2 says that the display areas shall be located adjacent to the wall of the principal structure, and shall not extend more than 20 feet from said wall, unless otherwise approved through site plan review. And my recollection from last time is that he did not intend to have the displays within 10 unless otherwise approved through site planner review. And my recollection from last time is that he did not intend to have the displays within ten, within twenty feet.
Right.
Of the wall of the principal structure, so we should probably explicitly approve the location of the display more than twenty feet from the wall of the principal structure.
Use.
Display or outside sales.
Right.
Structure. The.
Unless.
Primary structure.
I'm sorry, twenty feet or more from.
The wall of the primary structure?
I think unless authorized through site planner review or.
Unless approved through site planner view.
So maybe I could just give that code citation and say.
Why don't we just say this board approves the display or outside sales more than twenty feet from the wall of the primary structure as permitted by two ten dash twenty-four ten B two. So start it in the affirmative? Yeah. So this board allows. Okay, approves. Approves, yeah.
The display or outside sales more than twenty.
Feet from the wall of the principal structure.
Principal or primary, or it doesn't matter.
It's principle.
Principle. Okay.
And I would just say, principal structure, I would say pursuant to, instead of as permitted by, yeah.
Thank you.
And did he say anything about whether he's going to be removing and closing screening and or securing the display items during non-business hours?
He did not, and I don't require that, I don't, I don't recall that in the application materials.
I, maybe I would suggest that the building inspector inspect that materials are adequately secured.
I mean, he doesn't want stuff, you know, walking away when he's not there anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I wonder if you could, to a certain extent, consider trees to be adequately secured by virtue of their weight.
Yeah, yeah.
So that parking statement, I think you need to look at that last couple sentences there.
Yep, yep, that's right, I didn't finish that. Building inspector's not indicated that this.
Any parking violations?
Any parking violations? And this is actually supposed to be the next point. If I could find.
At home?
Thank you. Stuff that I can find in Google Docs.
Right over there, yep.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I did say not applicable for the fire marshal review. There may be some things that would be applicable, actually, as I was, I was kind of curious about whether or not we could someday allow this activity by right, instead of doing the full review every year. And as I was reviewing some other municipal codes where they specifically allowed Christmas tree sales, they did have things like, you can't put the Christmas trees right next to the building, since that would be a fire hazard. And so the fire marshal might have something to say about this, but I don't know what it is.
I guess all I would say is maybe the fire marshal reviewed the site plans and did not submit any comments or concerns.
And Steve is the fire marshal for the village at this point, is that used to in training? I mean, the storage actually does seem okay, since they would be in the circle, I would assume, rather than by the building.
So do you want to remove the first sentence of paragraph ten?
Sure, this, this part, that was boilerplate from the site plan template, yep, that's fine.
Two ten thirty-four C. I think that the waiver provisions are now in two ten dash thirty dot four C.
Okay, yeah, I, I I agree that they're in a different place. I was actually referring to the list of application materials.
Right.
And if.
Ah, okay.
If we could say waive the balance of as allowed in two ten thirty dot four C, was it?
Yeah. Yep.
We, we can just delete this, or we could say that they're listed in the section.
Yep.
Doesn't really matter to me. Should I just delete this?
I think, because I don't think it matters.
Okay, great.
I agree.
As allowed, because it finds the site plan finds the site plan application contains adequate information, and the missing application factors are not necessary to evaluate.
Actually, the, the requirements for waiver are different than they were before. So now you can waive if the chairperson finds that the requirement is not necessary for the, is not in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare, that the requirement is inappropriate or unrelated to the application, or it will not mitigate adverse impacts generated by the proposed project.
Yeah, we, Steve and I, as a background, had an interesting discussion behind the scenes where I told him that, hey, we had these application requirements. I have no particular authority to waive anything. I can give some suggestions, but ultimately goes to the board. And he said, no, you do. And I'm like, what?
Review board chairperson, right?
So I'm not quite sure what to make of that, because it says the board can waive them. I, and I'm not the board.
Well, but you, you can say that you deter, the, if you determine one of these three things. So you make the determination that the requirement is not requisite in the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, or you determine that the requirement is inappropriate or unrelated to the application, or you determine that the requirement will not mitigate adverse impacts generated by the project, and then the board may waive.
Okay, so I'll officially state that I do, I believe the application is adequate to evaluate impacts on health, safety, and public, and general welfare.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so then the board may waive that.
Yeah, okay. We'll get through this, but I have, I'd like to follow up on that topic, because it's, I'm finding it very confusing as to what to do about waiver requirements, particularly given what's going on recently. But let's get through this first.
Okay. Let's see, so there's really not, not a whole lot of other findings.
Well, the HPP doesn't have to approve this.
Correct.
Okay, so we can take one out.
Site plan, the section, so I was wondering, so that's not required at all, huh?
Oh, I think this is a I think this is an interesting question, is, is this going to be permanent? This approval, and which means he doesn't have to come in next year for this? Because I would, I would be interested in that, then he doesn't need to file again, but I think we need to figure out what the conditions would trigger him to come back in to look at this.
Any change in the site plan? Or any the same thing that we have, especially for the temporary use permit? If there's an emergency, if there's an emergency situation?
Okay, so well, we can, we can re, we can eliminate, so you think copying that language for the condition in the temporary use permit, that if we get a complaint, we can revoke it, we should stick that language in here?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think you can do that, but I don't see anything here that the HPV, HPP, that, that board would review.
Yeah, we'll get rid of number one.
And they're not going to get a building permit.
Correct.
So number two really doesn't make sense.
I would think, here's my suggestion, having number one, I think it shall expire if the two years elapses without holding this event.
Why two?
Let's say there's this COVID nineteen thing, COVID twenty, and he can't do it. Twenty-one, I don't know. Do you think, if it's not held in a given year, not holding it for a year shall cause it to expire?
I think it's okay to grant some persistency within roughly a month and a half time period, plus or minus hours of operation, the same, site plan the same. And maybe say, you know, this shall extend three years with an option to extend further as approved by the board at that time.
So Minnie can chime in on this. I don't think we can set an expiration date for this exactly, can we, unless it's abandoned?
This is really weird, right? I mean, you're doing site plan review for a temporary use, which by its terms should only be temporary. So why should it be permanent? But I agree with you conceptually that we can't have it expire on its terms, and the much better thing would be determine that it expires through non-use. So the question is, what period of non-use is the board comfortable with?
Well, quick question to that end, though. So in the application, it didn't say this would be seasonal on these days between this month and that month. So if we were to approve it with persistency, we're not necessarily approving it for November fifteenth through December thirtieth of next year as well. So I think the application might need updated if we want to grant persistency.
Yeah, except that there are two components to the application. One has to do with the use, which is what is temporary. And the other has to do with the location of the use, which is the site plan component.
So can we add a semi-dication that is season?
So the use is the date range. And the site plan approval is where stuff is located.
Yes.
Right.
Then I would say the site plan could be approved with persistency. Right, because it's the use, the temporary use that's going to dictate like when it's in operation, how long, the dates, and that sort of thing.
Why don't we say that the site plan approval shall be coterminous with any temporary permit issued for the seasonal Christmas tree use?
So they'll need to apply for another one next year?
No, they won't.
Have to apply for use, but not a site plan.
Are you talking about like temporally coterminous? How, how is it coterminous then, if, if they don't have to apply again?
They would just have to apply for the special permit, the temporary permit.
Okay.
Which then springs the site plan approval into existence, it gets approved again automatically.
Right.
So then who does this, does this run, does the site plan run with the land, and the temporary use permit is tied to the applicant? Or how does that work?
All right, so effectively, they could sell it with the idea that the site plan has persistency, if the temporary use should stay the same.
Yeah. For seasonal Christmas tree sales and the same. That's why I get to a point where I'm like, well, why not just approve this by right for seasonal Christmas tree sales, and any place that has, you know, more than five acres and, and space away from the building and.
Right. So, so first of all, number one there, where they don't need a building permit, so that one changed it. So we just need to set the expiration terms.
But can we go to the top? Can I see the top again? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, the very top of this.
Where it's site plan review for temporary permit for outdoor sales of Christmas trees and wreaths.
It's not a temporary permit.
It's really the site plan for the outdoor sale of Christmas trees and wreaths. Right?
Yeah.
So I would take out temporary permit for
just temporary permit.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I don't think, you know, as we're thinking through this, I'm sorry to flip flop on you, but I'm starting to think that we don't need to make it coterminous with the special permit, because if, if they don't have permission, then they can't do the use anyway. Doesn't, they can't put it anywhere.
You're saying you could issue this without an expiration?
I think we can issue this without an expiration.
So underwater front consistency, you might want to fix that, Justin, or it's a select one?
Could we could we issue it with a, can you issue it with an expiration that might coincide with any code updates, anything like that?
No.
So it's either permanent, or it's annual. And if it's permanent, it's permanent for a hundred and fifty years. They could always come back and say, let's sell Christmas.
Well, I think we could say if they abandon this, then, then it expires, and I think that would be an excellent thing to add.
I'd like to do that. I'm okay without having an expiration on this, and the special use permit will be the determinant as to when this is useful.
So shall expire if the applicant does not, well, it's not really.
Yeah, if the applicant does not conduct seasonal Christmas tree plant, seasonal Christmas tree and gips, whatever he said in the
Yeah, wreath.
Sales pursuant to a validly issued temporary use permit for two consecutive years?
Sure.
Sure. Maybe there's a blight in Christmas trees one year.
Or maybe you have a health problem or something, who knows?
Yeah, okay. I like that.
You too.
And then do you also want to say that it can be revoked if there's an emergency, like copy and paste the?
I don't see that in our other in.
One of the conditions in the other one.
Don't leave there yet.
It's one of the last conditions.
Yep, I got it. I'll copy and paste it, and then you can see it.
Don't, don't leave there yet. Yeah, you may want to put pursuant to a validly issued temporary use permit for the sale of Christmas trees. I mean, do you have to do more after the temporary use permit in number one?
You, you could repeat it if you want.
We've got it up here, too.
Yeah, and then it's the, the planning board would reserve the right to revoke the temper planning board. I'm not sure you can revoke.
Oh, that's, that should say temporary use permit, so temporary zoning permit.
Right.
Uh, yes, on the other document. So let me change that.
Yeah, actually, if it creates a problem, it's going to be Steve's problem. You can't, you can't revoke a site plan for that.
So, but we can revoke the use, which does the same thing.
Right. Okay, can we just, let's get rid of paragraph two then?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
You need validly issued temporary use permit? If it's issued, isn't it assumed that it's valid?
Yep, we can take that out. Less is more. Less is more.
Yeah.
Okay, so number two goes away.
Tightened up number one. And they'll take the S out of condition.
Oh, where do I, oh, yeah.
Now we just have one.
There.
Nice job.
Well, thank you for helping.
Yeah, thank you, Justin, for working on this. Yes, it requires a lot of thinking to figure out, uh, how to bridge up each of these little items.
Yeah.
Yeah, just finding out what's required. I appreciate all the help.
Well done. You guys are-
You will. Um, shall we vote on, let's see, did we already vote on the other one, too? And, uh, and I can, I'll make a motion, um, to adopt the resolution as written for the site plan for outdoor sale of Christmas trees and wreaths?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll just note that we'll need to update the number based on whatever Linda tells us it needs to be.
I'll put indicators here that needs to be filled in.
Great, thank you.
And I did, uh, update the other resolution to say temporary use permit. It said temporary zoning permit, but, uh, use is correct.
Wow, excellent.
Okay, um, let's see, I'll stop sharing. Are we all good?
So, we're done with Mr. Jewett. Um, I guess I'll share the other one. And we'll have to see who wants to volunteer for doing this with the next one, next month.
I'll volunteer for the Christmas trees for next year.
I can, I can take on another one. What's, uh, what's up for next month?
I think we have to deal with this, uh, let me share my screen here. Okay, so, it's next month, we'll have to deal with, uh, whatever is going on with the application, um, for Shane Place over there, over next to lot 32. And it sounds like we're going to have to work, look at this with the trustees, but I know we were discussing with the trustees as to, hey, their, their review is kind of a duplicate of ours, and this is just a poster child of that. I don't know what they're looking at, but, um, I really don't like the situation of having two separate boards kind of looking at the same thing and possibly making different recommendations to the applicant. That doesn't sound good. But anyway, we'll see where that goes. Um, so this is for, um, I don't think it's, does anyone really want to, uh, discuss 34, 36 State Street separately from 40 State Street? Or Mindy, are we obliged to discuss them separately?
No, they're, really deal with the identical issue.
All right, so I'm going to suggest we just-
They're a very close physical proximity to each other.
And none of them are modifying land.
Correct, or use.
Or use, okay. So, um, I'm just going to pull this up, just so we do our diligence of reminding ourselves what Seeker says. Um, but the first one, it talks on, it may involve construction or alteration of land, and that's a, that's a no. It doesn't.
Correct.
If anyone has any objections to any of this, by all means, speak up. Next one, again, no, no geology is changing, so that's going to be a no for impact on geology. Impacts in surface water, again, no changes are proposed, and, and there's no wetlands involved, to my knowledge. Uh, impact on groundwater, again, there's no changes proposed. Impact on flooding, um, there's no development proposed. Air, there's no new emission sources or development proposed.
There's nothing physical that-
Plants, animals, again, no change. Um, agricultural resources, there's no farms involved. And aesthetic resources, again, no development is proposed. Archaeological resources, again, no development is proposed. Open space and recreation, uh, we have a nice open space and recreation area on the canal, and this will not change that. Critical environmental areas are going to be unaffected. It will not change, there's no proposal to change transportation systems. Again, energy, we'll have a big old no. Maybe I can go a little faster. Noise, odor, and light, again, no changes are proposed. Human health. So, no changes are proposed. Um, community plans, I don't see how, uh, this is going to be an issue here. Community character is not changing. All right. So, I goes through all 18 of our criteria here. Um, does everyone agree that, um, that this is fine for both properties?
Yes.
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 Absolutely.
Yes, yep.
The only impact on the environment might be that, uh, Mr. Michaels might catch more fish standing on his extended shoreline. I think we're good.
All right, so I saved two copies of this under each one. We'll send that off to Linda, and Linda unfortunately needs to do the work of publishing with the state, isn't that correct, um, Mindy?
Publishing what with the state?
This document we just did.
She has to send a copy of the neg deck to-
Negative. Okay, will do.
You see.
And they're, they have a website for doing that, correct?
Correct, right.
Yeah.
And here is his agricultural data statement. We saw that today. We didn't hear a peep out of powers. Um, so the next ones we had are, here are my files here. We had a resolution on, uh, waterfront consistency. Um, the one thing I don't have is the parcel numbers. Uh, so, he, we do have one of them here.
I can pull them up if you want me to. Are you looking for the one for, um, uh, the physical therapy place?
Well, this is 34, 36.
And that's the parcel number you need?
Yeah, uh, we need the two different parcel numbers.
Okay, I can get both. If you want to move on, I can, uh-
Yeah. Is that the tax, uh, lot number?
Yeah, the tax number.
He includes that.
Yeah.
I can fill those in if you need them. Oh, yeah, see.
Yeah, we'll let Linda fill those in.
Yeah, 164-711.
Yeah. It's there.
Okay, so, um, this is a stock resolution, uh, on LWRP, and it goes through all of the ones, and what I had tentatively put in here, well, a finding for each one is it's not applicable because no construction or change in land use is proposed. Um, that's what I put for all of these.
I agree.
I mean, I think Molly, what's her name, owes us ours back to our lives. This is-
Yeah.
I know where this boilerplate is from.
Okay, so anyway, this is just basically regurgitating our code, and this is, I think this was copied from whatever we worked on for the, uh, the last LWRP review. Um, so the only one that has a different finding is Seeker, uh, just says Seeker regulations have been, um, addressed in a separate decision. Um, and then what-
Or we could say the board is determined that the, the proposed action will not have a potentially significant adverse environmental impact, and, or, you know, the board issued a, uh, neg deck under Seeker.
Right, yeah. Otherwise, it makes it sound like, you know, there was a-
Right.
Review that found something. Wasn't a decision, it was a un, non-decision.
Right.
Is that adequate?
Perfect. Thank you.
I guess we have to formally vote to issue a neg deck as well, but that should be, and that should be part of the subdivision review.
Yes.
Okay, um, so then I will, state will find it consistent with waterfront consistency standards. Um, and I don't think this whole section that Mindy's gone over in the past is, uh, warrants discussion, because that's only if it's inconsistent.
Correct, right.
And, uh, we don't have any additional recommendations, which we can give on a denial. Okay, is everyone okay with this?
Yes.
Okay, so I will make a motion to, to approve the waterfront consistency review for 34, 36 State Street?
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, these will all be yeses down here. So, you know, we can have Linda update some of these, I think. Or I can just copy them real quick.
While you do that, I just want to make comment that I don't necessarily mind going through the LWRP process for subdivision lot consolidation. And while it seems kind of trivial in this case, imagine instead of it being the two lots that are next to the canal, it was the lot in between the two lots. And by combining those three lots into one, the opportunities for potential future development and risk to the village are far greater than just connecting a couple plots of land that border the canal. So, I do find that there's some protections that, uh, this process provides us as a village, um, that I don't necessarily mind.
I'm going to, I'm going to save an identical one for 40 State?
I said brilliance.
All right, so that means Mr. Leek gave you up to second it. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the LWRP review for 40 State Street?
Second.
And how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll have to add this to the other one after the fact. Okay, so Linda, you'll have to, uh, update the, uh, numbering again, and the parcel numbers.
Okay, will do.
Okay, so with that, I don't think I have anything more to share, so I will stop sharing my screen. Uh, how do I stop?
And I'll prepare the resolu, the proposed resolution, um, approving the site plan applications for those two.
Oh, what, everyone disappeared. Okay, so we need to make a motion to, um, hold on a second. So, we need to make a motion to approve the, each of the subdivision applications? All right.
Yes.
Um, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision application and issue a negative declaration of environmental, uh, significance for 34, 36 State Street?
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I, um, I guess I will, uh, add that this is conditioned on Monroe County planning, not issuing an adverse recommendation. Or I guess not, uh, Monroe County planning not recommending disapproval of this. Um, so, the, I will, um, make the same motion for 40 State, so I'll move for 40 State Street that we approve the subdivision review and issue a negative declaration of environmental significance, uh, conditioned on not receiving a recommendation of disapproval from Monroe County Planning.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Well, I think that sums everything up.
I was, I don't have anything else. I was just sharing the, um, does anybody know, just, just one final question, why Mr. Michaels was so unlucky as to have those two appendage parcels sticking out in the canal? There's no place else in the village that even has those.
He created those parcels. That's when he bought them, uh, so that did not used to exist on the county planning site. When he bought them, he had to register that with count, the county, and that created those parcels, and someone updated the GIS map.
Huh.
So, if you stand out, what stops other residents from doing that?
No, no one else has them. These don't exist anywhere else. So, what you're saying, Justin, is that he basically had the, uh, misfortune of mentioning it, and then they added it on the map, and then he had to rebuy it from the state?
No, he bought it, and then they updated the map. I believe is what happened.
He bought the parcel, and then they, they flagged it and said, oh, there's some land they actually don't own.
Yeah, well, you got to file the land transactions with, with Monroe County, and I guess part of that is, uh, they need to update their records. So, that happened, and GIS got updated, I guess.
How many other, so, Justin, uh, like, to your point, there's no other plots like this in the village, but if you span out, how many other homes in the village could, um, look at that land on the canal and try to do what he did?
No, no one. No one else has those dangly things over the canal.
But what about this one right there? Top left. Oh, no, that's it.
No, that's his. These two are his.
Go farther up to west of the, uh, main bridge.
No, nothing.
All right, so here's some houses. Like, that little plot up there, no, go up to the left. It doesn't have the land mass, right there. It doesn't have the land mass, but there's that land that's beyond the property line.
Could those property- This needs to adjust out.
Well, that would be the one to the left. Like, would they go and talk to the Canal Corps and say, hey, look, there's some land out there that I don't really own, I'd like to own it?
Some of this could be alignment issue, the, the images are never guaranteed to align with the underlying survey, right? And I think these, some of these things were just sloppily drawn here, so I, I don't- I, I don't know, maybe there was a case of he actually had a survey done, and then they spotted something that wasn't initially part of this parcel that was, that was dry.
Interesting.
Well, I believe what he said is if you want to build a dock on the canal, um, you don't have to own the land. Okay, but then you need to get approval from the Canal Corporation. You gotta pay them every year for a lease. And then you gotta pay for it. And then I think the HPB has to review it and approve the appearance of your dock as well. Bit of work to go through. So it sounds like if you take the cost of a lease multiplied by N years.
I see.
That might be more than the cost to buy it. You're trying to keep it for a while. Now, the only thing about this is, um, you know, if the village wanted to do some type of development along here, like put a trail or something in, that could be, this could be an obstacle if it's no longer public land. But these are all private properties here. Um, and I think where his properties are, there's, I see no likelihood of any trail ever being constructed there, because that one is steep. And there already is a trail that ends right there, and would make sense that it ends and just goes to a sidewalk. So I don't see any rationale for constructing a trail across his properties.
Right.
Do you have any idea what the purchase price was of those?
Nope.
I'm curious.
No.
You can find out by looking at the county clerk's website. It's a matter of record, yeah.
And I have just one question for you guys' opinions with regards to the, um, pavilion consideration down on Shane Place that we talked about. So that overhang that's in the plan that we talked about in that, that that's private property, if they want to put a overhang pavilion like that, there's really nothing we can do unless I'm, I'm not suggesting I want to do anything different. It's, we're not there to approve whether or not we like it or not. We're there to determine if the site plan gets approved, and if there's any concerns. And so if the pavilion blocks the view of some other property, that's not really our consideration, or if it changes the way that the community interacts, that's not really for our consideration. They could put a building up there for all we know.
Uh, we can look at that stuff, aesthetics. So if someone was to, say, propose a six-story condo building along the canal, and it's gonna be right next to someone's house, like in another community we know down, down the river, um, we could say that's gonna be a big aesthetic impact and have something to say about that.
Right. And you would look at it not only in terms of site plan review, but it would also probably trigger seeker review that pulls in all the other environmental considerations as well.
Yeah, so if a house has views of the canal, and then you put in something so big, you completely block those views of the canal, that's a environmental impact.
Right. But in this particular case, we're there, we're not there to judge whether or not they're, they're most efficiently using the space relative to what, it's just is what they're building reasonably appropriate?
Does it comply with the setback requirements of the code? Um, is it likely to impose any externalities on adjacent property owners, stuff like that?
Yeah, okay.
So no, so basically, if we think it's unattractive, we could also, if it complies with code, and it's not our favorite looking building, we might ask them to plant shrubs or something like that, or you could ask them to change it. But I think it's kind of hard to require them to change it if it complies with code, unless it really hurts someone else's property.
In which case she owns them all.
Yeah, right.
Right. So she wants to put a covered pavilion that maybe isn't as engaging. That's really not our concern.
I think that we've, we've gone through all the agenda items, and if the board wants to hang out and discuss philosophical stuff, maybe that should be done post.
Yeah, I, I, okay, good. I'm good. Thanks.
I don't mean to cut you off, it's just.
No, please do.
Yeah, okay.
All right, yeah, we've, uh, I'll move to during the meeting then. We've completed all our business, and I'm hungry.
Second.
Well done, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good week.